Welcome, everybody, to our board meeting. As people start to arrive to the webinar, we will go ahead and get started. Today is February 22. We are meeting for our board study session. It is 5:30. Welcome, everybody who is on our panel tonight and all of those attending. We are going to start our meeting with doing a roll call. Director Sproul.
Here.
Director Decker.
Here.
And Director Zavala.
Yeah.
And Director Smith is not with us tonight due to some other things going on. But we do have quorum, so we will go ahead and get started. And I am Director Barrows. I am also here. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Snell to introduce our speakers and guests tonight.
Thank you, Director Barrows, and thank you, all our board directors for the meeting this evening. We're excited. It's a study session tonight, so this is an opportunity for us to go a little deeper with some of the topics that you have focused on this year. And so I'm going to go ahead and get us into a slideshow here. And the topics we're going to look at are related to the goals that you have established for the year. So one under board development, a couple related to student learning, strategic planning, and then our obligatory pandemic planning and response section. So but we're starting off with our students today. I'm excited. They've been working very hard on the student advisory. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Muller and a couple of students to share their progress with you and an opportunity for you to ask any questions.
I'm Bianca Muller, and I have been working with the students. This year, we have eight that we've been working through to go through the process and what we want this to look like and just creating some bylaws. So we have eight total that we've been working with. We're hoping to expand that to between 35 and 40 students to really make sure that our student voice is heard. I'm going to let Princiana go ahead and share alongside Clark. And Princiana is a senior from Fort and Clark is a junior from ITech. So Princiana? Or Clark, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah.
Hello, members of the board. My name is Clark. In January, we met to discuss the bylaws that we would live within our committee. We have 11 total articles that discuss our duties, memberships, meetings, rules of order, etc. At the meeting, we went through each of the 11 articles to get clarification and discuss and approve all these articles. Our members wanted more time to discuss and think about the term limits, the selection process of the student leaders of the committee, and how those leaders would work together, as well as the title of these leaders.
And then in February, which was our most recent meeting of developing the student advisory committee, we finalized the bylaws. So we primarily went over the topic of membership terms, which can be found in Article 5 of the bylaws. And we also discussed how co-chairs will be selected, which can be found in Article 6. Some members will have a one-year term. And if they're so interested, they can contact their principal or designee to serve another one-year term. But they can't exceed two years of being a part of the student advisory committee. So relating to the previous slide, there are going to be co-chairs, which are two members instead of vice president and president, to avoid any disputes and have more equal collaboration. How this process is going to work is a student will express their interest through an application. And then the superintendent will choose who will be co-chairs with input from the current members. So we will be sending out the bylaws to our current members for a final review.
Now, looking forward to the future, in March, we will come back together to brainstorm our main talking points and to share our ASB classes, advisors, and administration, all that feedback. This will also be a time that we will work with the principal on the process of recruiting new members. We hope to have around 35 to 40 total members, as stated earlier, by our April meeting.
And then so in our upcoming April meeting, that will be our first student advisory committee meeting with our new members that are being recruited in March. And the meeting will consist primarily of an introductory meeting of welcoming new members and discuss what the committee is all about. And that's all.
Thank you both. Any questions from board directors for either our students or Mrs. Muller?
I have a question. I think it's great that you talked about kind of increasing the number. Because you said right now there's eight and you want, what did you say, 25 to 30 or so?
35 to 40, I think.
Okay. What are, you talked about, you know, like, talking to the administration. But what are your ideas for, I guess, how to get the word out or just how to make sure that there's kind of a wide range of different, like, voices and perspectives that you have, either like some diversity or just different, you know, different perspectives kind of on the student advisory group?
I'll let Clark and Princiana piggyback off of what I say. But the members have all discussed really putting up some posters that would have some information. The ASB classes at each school made beautiful posters that they usually hang around the schools and then getting the word out either through email, through other types of different smaller flyers, posters that way, and then working with principals to really make sure that there is diversity that would be selected and coming forward. And then we left five spots for Dr. Snell or Designee to choose. So if there is a certain voice that is missing, then he would be able to then go out and pick some other students that could represent that voice, just to make sure.
Yeah, well, that's what I was going to ask. If you were kind of putting the word out and getting people to, like, come to you or express interest or if there was going to be efforts to, like, reach out to, you know, specific students or specific, you know, groups or clubs that might have kind of, you know, that you might want to get interest from or anything like that. So, great. It sounds like you guys are doing some great work.
Laura, Princiana, oh, go ahead, Kathy, sorry.
Oh, I was just going to say, I have to say, it's impressive work. What a great opportunity. You've had to kind of sit down and do sort of what we've done, you know, set up policies, set up your bylaws, you know, have to follow, understand what the consequences are and talk about why do we want to do this? Does this make sense to have this here? How long do we want it to last for? I'm very impressed. And Ms. Muller, you are amazing at what you do. Your name has come up more than just a couple of times when we've talked to students, not only about this, but other things. So I want to tell you how much we appreciate your dedication in off-hours to your students and to the other students in the district. So thank you so much. And to the students, while the extra time that you've put in during a pandemic, when everything is, as I say to my preschoolers, cattywampus, I am impressed. Thank you so much.
Well, in addition to helping form this student advisory committee, Clark and Princiana and the other members also sit on the superintendent transition team. So they come once a month to those meetings as well. And some of you have had an opportunity to meet some of them. So we really appreciate what they've contributed this year. And it's quite a legacy that they're going to leave with us. So I see Director Sproul has her hand raised. And then Directors Avella Ortega as well. So go to Director Sproul.
I think I was actually second. So Sandra?
I would just love to hear from Clark and Princiana if you guys wouldn't mind sharing kind of what your vision or how would your vision for the student committee is? Kind of, I know, I know that we've given you what we would like to see. But I guess I would love to know what you would like to see for the student committee.
My shared vision, or at least my vision for the student advisor committee is that it's a two-way feedback loop between the board and between students that helps give the board another perspective and help advise them when making important decisions. Also, it makes the students feel like they have a little bit more of a voice, which I think is important.
I would say my vision was just getting different perspectives and not just hearing the same voices over and over. So you can see, like, different problems in a school and what students want to see to improve and all that other stuff.
Thank you.
So my question, because I recognize you both from the couple superintendent transition committee meetings I've been to. You've had this opportunity to get a little insight into a lot of the, like, long-term planning and strategic, you know, visioning that is going on at district office, which is probably, maybe I'm assuming, but given some insights and helped you in the process of developing the student advisory group. I'm just wondering what you think should carry forward in terms of orienting, you know, future student advisors, right? So you've had, you've had more of a glimpse than the average student would into that kind of district working. So, like, what should we provide? And how do we help orient from the district perspective to our future student advisory leaders? And that's, that's kind of a bigger question. I don't necessarily ask, expect an answer now. It's just something to think about because you guys have been so instrumental in the student advisory or in the superintendent transition committee. And I'm just thinking how much extra insights you've had because of that and how do we help support the students moving forward? Good for that.
It's a great question. And maybe as, I think, Princiana, you said that the April meeting would be getting to know each other and kind of building from there. So those could be opportunities to ask some of those questions and see what, what students might need to know to help inform the district moving forward. So we're excited about this. I feel like the, it hasn't been the boring part. But making the bylaws isn't as fun as having 35 students together and getting to meet and talk with new people. So I feel like there's been a lot of great work and now we get to take it to kind of the next level. So Director Barrows, I saw your hand come up.
Yeah, I was just going to kind of add on a little bit to what Director Sproul was saying. You know, I guess I would want to know, and again, you guys can think about it. You don't have to answer it now, but just what can we do as a board to kind of help you guys? You know, because I know a lot of it is, you know, going to be, we want it to be two-way communication and not just, you know, hey, we want to know from the students about this. But, you know, like, what would you guys like to know? You know, either about, like, what we do as board members or, you know, like, I guess, just we want to help you to really understand kind of how things work or kind of, you know, what our roles are. So if there's anything that we can do to better support you guys as student advisors to us, just let us know whether it's coming out and talking to you guys at one of your groups or, I don't know. Yeah, just keep us informed on what we can do.
One area that we might look at that has a shared board and student interest is Clark and Princiana and the other students have talked a lot about supporting students, that it's been a really challenging couple of years. And so looking at mental health and making sure that that's on the radar. So I know the board looked at our panorama data a couple of meetings ago. And we were thinking we might share that data with the student advisory as well to think about what ideas would they have for next year based on what our data is seeing this year. So we want it to be really action-oriented and not just a sit-and-get kind of experience. So if the board has other ideas around kinds of maybe entry points, we can bring those forward to the students to consider and then allow the students to maybe select where they think their energy should be spent and how, maybe from a menu of items that is interesting to you as board directors to get their feedback. So, Princiana, Clark, anything else that you'd like to add? Mrs. Muller, anything else?
Just thank you for giving us the opportunity to share tonight.
Thank you for being on here. You're welcome to stay on the call. Or also, I know that you all are all very busy. So we'll excuse you if you would like to go about your evening. So thank you, Clark. Thank you, Princiana. I'm going to reshare my screen, Tracy, Director Barrows, and just kind of keep us moving forward, if that's okay? So our next topic this evening is actually a second look. We had this as a study session topic earlier in the year related to dual language. And so I'm going to turn it over to Christie and Lucy tonight. And I think Elsa might also be on the call to share an update with the board. And Christie, I'll just keep driving the slides if that's okay with you.
That's great.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Snell. We actually brought a small but mighty army so that we could share information for, with you. And we asked for this extra date because we're pretty excited about what we've got going on. So I wanted to be able to get this in front of you, kind of update on where we are with the implementation of the OSPI grant that Lucy applied for and we got. Talk a little bit about expanding our program and give you a follow-up on what we've been thinking. And we have members of the DART, the Data and Assessment Team here to talk about that. And then what we're looking forward to with our multilingual learners over the next couple of years. So I think Elsa is up next.
Oh, I get to do the very important thing that everyone should know about dual language. So my goal for you is to know the three pillars. Bilingualism and bilinguism, high academic achievement, and social-cultural competence. And one of the important things that I really wanted to touch on really quickly is the social-cultural competence, because that is going to drive all our work and all equity work. And this is what's going to align the equity work with our dual language as well.
And then we linked in there that the three pillars is a link to an article from Dr. Jose Medina with whom we are working with both our administrators and our teachers. He's really helping us set the stage for how we embed dual language as a major pillar of our equity policy and what it means to be involved in dual language. And Jeff, if you go to the next slide, I have a little research for you. And we're going to do a little audience participation. So this should be fun, just like we would do if you were in class. So we already, I think, shared with you that dual language is Washington's priority program for English language learners. And we have a goal that by 2030, anybody who wants to be part of it should be able to in our district. And so we're going to go ahead and just have you read out a bullet at a time. And Ms. Barrows, you're the first person I see on my screen. Will you read bullet number one, please?
Sure. So research says it promotes equity and improves educational opportunities.
Thank you, Director Sproul. Will you grab the next one?
Yes. Research says that African-American students benefit from dual language programs in ELA at Portland Public Schools, according to the New America Study that examines cost of dual language immersion 2018.
Thank you. And Director Zavala Ortega, the next one, please?
The only effective means of instruction to eliminate achievement gap between ELs and native English speakers.
Wow, that's a big, bold statement. Director Decker, you've got the next one.
It creates solid foundation in language for college and career opportunities and provides opportunity to compete in a multilingual world.
Thank you. And since we're missing a director, Dr. Snell, I'm going to call on you. Would you read the last one, please?
Program has positive effects on intellectual growth where dual-language students outperform monolingual students by eighth grade and by high school are advanced by an average of one year over monolingual peers.
Thank you. You can see why we're so hopped up about it. So we want to keep this in front of you to catch our excitement as we plan forward. Lucy's going to talk a little bit about how we are planning forward and what the structure is.
So we, as we mentioned before, we are working with a consultant by the name of Catherine Karason. And those of you who have been in Evergreen School District might recognize her. We are working on a framework and developing that framework alongside with her and the rest of our team. We've already met with Jeff. And so in there are links to the development of the framework and the links to the slides of the deck that were shared with Jeff. And so we have started working on looking at our program strand and evaluating it, evaluating it using the COW and the OSPI framework. And it's also linked in there. So we are also going to look and have a small initial advisory group. And we'll expand as we start looking into some instructional practices. And I went a little bit ahead, but with that small group, we did start with the program structure and completed that assessment. So we are on our way of just looking at our overall program and starting our groups so that we can include all stakeholders in the development and the movement of this program forward.
Do you want to grab that one too, listener?
Sure. And we've had professional learning already. We have 40 teachers across the district and across our program attend professional learning with Dr. Jose Medina. It's actually going to be a total of 12 hours and their commitment is so commendable. They really believe in this program. The timing is from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. And so everybody can see that we all are working towards the same goal. And part of the social-cultural piece, I mean, we are working on the piece of lesson planning. And Dr. Jose Medina is really focused on that piece. He says that lesson planning is a political act, whether we maintain or chip away at the systems of oppression with each lesson plan, with each lesson we plan.
So we are looking at this as a student's right to an excellent education and embedding that in the equity plan and really helping our teachers see that in a dual-language classroom, they absolutely have the power and the capacity to empower our students to live into being a bicultural, bilingual, bilingual student with us. This is another exciting piece that we have been working on. We've talked a lot about how dual language nests within English language development or multilingual programming. And so next year, we were given the go-ahead for Lucy to assume leadership for all our multilingual learners, which is super exciting. We have just a tremendous opportunity here to not only expand dual language, but to look at the current practice that we have for our English language learners and see how to, basically, how to help support them in a more meaningful way. We could see by our data that so far, we were missing the mark on that. And we want to see what we need to do to help, help our students more firmly attach themselves to the school structure, such as it is, where they feel belonging, they feel honored and validated with what they bring to the table, both linguistically and culturally. And so we'll be exploring, that's part of what our big work is, the remainder of this year and into next year, is how are we providing services to kids? And what do we need to do to make that more meaningful for them? So we will give you a lot more information on that when we have our two bye meetings, unless, unless we come back in this format and give you some updates before that. So I promise that we brought people from data analysis and research. And this has been some of the most exciting work we've done in the last week or two. Lucy and I keep begging for data meetings, which is not totally typical. But we have seen some of the best data presentations ever. So we have Anne Plager, Friendler, I think I said that wrong. She's new to the DART and has come in and become a wizard with data. And so Lindsay, do you want to talk a little bit about what we're looking at? Or do you want me to just keep going?
Oh, thank you so much for the opportunity. I think you should keep going. And I think Anne should be able to explain the data. And I'm here if she needs support.
Great. So basically, this is data that we're using to look at how we expand, when we expand, where we expand. So it's a lot of predictive data, but it's also current data that tells a story over time so that we can see a picture of the district. Couple of the things that we're looking at, of course, are, do we add additional strands or classes within existing schools? The other thing that we're looking at is whether or not a full dual-language school, such as RBG, would be a possibility for us. And I think you'll see by the numbers that we're going to show you that having something that's that big may actually fit our needs more than slowly adding programs. So with that, I'll turn it over to Anne.
Thank you. So this map here is showing VPS schools. And it's showing the number of Spanish-speaking students who have ever received EL services. You can see we're starting all the way back in 2006 and all of those bubbles are just exploding. In 2006, VPS only had 538 Spanish-speaking students who'd ever received EL services. That's only 2% of the student population. This year, we have 3,337. That's 14%. Just looking at our trends, if we keep going at the current rate, by 2030, we might be looking at over 8,000 Spanish-speaking EL students, which would be 31% of our student population.
So one of the things that blew my mind today when we were talking is thinking that if that's, if that's the case, if we have 8,000 Spanish-speaking students and we want to serve them in dual language, because that's the premier model and the one that research suggests that help kids really acquire both languages. So that would mean if we had 8,000 in dual language, then we have to have their corresponding other 8,000 to be the English part or the English speakers in 50/50 programs. So that would mean technically, like, 60% of our kids could be served by dual-language programming. So that was just sort of a whoa for me this afternoon.
Next slide, please. So this graph is showing a couple possible models for how dual language programs could increase. That black line in the middle there is 2030. That's when the state wants all students to have access to a dual-language program. I didn't click next item, please. Currently, to support our 3,403 students, we would need 284 dual-language classrooms. These are the students not currently being served. So we would need our current capacity to have 284 dual-language classrooms just to serve the population we currently have. Next, please. If we're looking at that number of possibly 8,000 students in the next 10 years, we would need 667 dual-language classrooms to have all of them have access to a Spanish dual-language program. And again, this is just looking at the Spanish-speaking students. Next, please. Currently, we have 35 classrooms. If we don't expand our program at all, if we keep it as it is, that's what we'll still have in 2030, 35 classrooms compared to the minimum 284 for our current population. Next, please. If we take the classrooms we currently have and we extend all of them through 12th grade, so those students who are currently in K-5 classrooms, if they extend all the way through, that would bring us up to 103 classrooms by 2030. Next. To meet the goal, one possibility would be to add two kindergarten classes every year for seven years. This is starting in 2023, and extend all programs through 12th grade. That would get us to 173 classrooms by 2030. And see, that's the green line on the graph here. And we would eventually hit 297 classrooms by 2040, enough to serve our current population. But odds are, the population will be increasing by then. Next, please. One option that would get us closer to hitting our goal by 2030 would be to add four kindergarten classes per year for the next eight years, again, starting in the 2023, 2024 school year, and extend all of those programs through 12. That would bring us to 247 classrooms by 2030 or 521 classrooms by 2040. Christie, anything you would like to add?
Well, I think, let's let the, the brains settle in with this information. Look at our last graph, and I'm sure we'll have time for questions and answers because that's, are just things to consider. It's a lot of information.
So this last chart here is just showing the bilinguism seals that have been earned by VPS graduates. So the majority of them have been earned in Spanish. And you can see in the column, the row that starts with Spanish, about 12 of the bilinguism seals earned in Spanish were earned by students who spoke English as their primary language. 85 were earned by students who spoke Spanish as their primary language. And you can also see the other seals that have been earned since 2015 in this chart.
One of the things we were talking about today is that we haven't had a great way to track data of kids in the program in dual language over time. And so that's one of the things we want to know is how can we increase the number of students who are taking advantage of this opportunity to get a seal of bilinguism? So we need to figure out how to better track who's in the program and who's not. All right, so that's, that's the end of our formal presentation. But we wonder, of course, what this brought up for you. Kylie, I see your hand raised right away.
I'm curious of our EL students, what percent?
I'm curious of our EL students, what percentage are native Spanish speakers?
It's approximately sixty percent.
Okay, okay. So the eight thousand students projected by twenty thirty. And those are all going to be potentially forecasted Spanish speaking, native Spanish speakers. Okay.
What we did learn about the data today is that it is a fairly aggressive. I was gonna say prognostication, but that's a silly word. What word am I looking for, people?
Projection, like.
Thank you, because we're not speaking magician language. I don't know what I was thinking. It it took out the the team took out the last two years of COVID when we've seen a fairly sizable dip and projected from two thousand nineteen before any of the dips happened. So if we stayed on the prior trajectory before COVID, we think we'd hit somewhere around eight thousand. If we continue to have an enrollment decline like other places are having them, that could look different, but nevertheless, we would see a huge increase from where we started in two thousand six and a huge increase from where we are at the moment.
Well, that's what kind of caught me by surprise because I'm thinking if eight thousand students represent thirty one percent, that's a significant overall growth as well for the district. So but regardless, eight thousand, six thousand, it's a significant growth.
I will just add for the predictions, it's very much an idea, but because the trends and student enrollment are affected by so many factors, just based on our current trends isn't enough to say for sure this is what's going to happen. But it kind of gives us an idea of what we could be looking at, not necessarily for sure. It will be affected by a lot of different factors.
No, I appreciate it. This this surprised me.
Thank you. I see your hand up too.
Yes. So you brought up an interesting pop, made created an interesting question in my brain. And that was when you talked about the you know, how we're having a sorry, my brain is really fuzzy tonight, a decrease in enrollment because of the pandemic. I'm curious as to is that does that decrease in enrollment manifest itself the same in English speakers as it does in bilingual students or dual language students? Are we are we losing as many EL students as we are non EL students?
For Spanish speakers, the trend looks very similar. For some other languages that have a smaller population like Czechies, for example, we actually haven't seen a significant drop. But for Spanish speakers, it has been relatively consistent with the overall district.
Thanks.
What else came up for you when you were seeing the graph or listening to us talk about our work?
I I had a question. Because obviously, this sounds like a significant increase in classrooms. And it sounds like that's based on the projection that we will have students that need this type of classroom. Or, you know, I guess I'm just also thinking we might have the students to fill the classroom, but is there any concern over doing I and I have no idea kind of whether the job market for dual language teachers is it's hard to recruit teachers versus there are lots of teachers, you know, and it's a competitive world. I'm not really sure. I guess I just think about some of those pieces in terms of you need dual language teachers, you also need you know, support staff, special education staff, you know, that are bilingual, just kind of all of the other pieces to fit into that too.
Yeah, this we've been sort of stressed about that all along. Now we're real stressed about it because it is highly competitive and we're not the only state that is trying to do this. And we're not the only city within the state. So it is very competitive. There are not that many bilingual graduates coming out of teacher school. So I know this year Lucy is scrambling around like a mad woman, calling everybody she's ever known who's a teacher and any good. She keeping that she's texting me this picture of the list on her board of all these connections she's making and trying to she's been bringing people to the district and talking to them, getting them into our classrooms. But we won't be able to find three hundred people between all of us of people we used to know that would love to come work with us again. So we definitely need a strategic plan on how we will approach recruiting. I know Lucy and some others are working with programming with different universities to sponsor our students to to leave us and go into university or become parents and we help them along the way. We want to definitely recruit and keep our own kids and keep them coming back to us. Lucy, did you have stuff to add to that?
No, but I do agree where it's going to have to be the entire system, helping the entire district, trying to help help graduate our kids and then help them move along. We have the kids and so hopefully they'll be able to come up with a way that they'll be able to continue going to school and and getting their degree and coming back and helping their communities. And that is the power of dual language.
Yeah, my my only just kind of wondering is, or I guess just wanting to make sure that we're you know, if we're planning to expand, you know, this quickly or we want to expand, you know, this many classrooms by this date that we make sure that we have the staffing to do that so that it's not like we're opening this many classes, but we only have this many teachers. So then we have to kind of backtrack and not open it, I guess.
There was a previous plan and that was to begin programs in different buildings this year and the next year. And we we decided to take a step back, look at the what we have currently in our system and then try to plan in a systematic, organized way. You can't offer programs if you don't have teachers. And so that's why it's just working at different levels. So it is it is a concern.
It was, I have to say, it's really shocking because when you first say, you know, by twenty thirty, we have to have to, I'm like, oh, twenty thirty. And then it's like, wait, it's twenty twenty two. It's only eight years away. That is so crazy to me. So yeah, it's there's a lot of hard work ahead. I feel that we are so lucky in this school district that we have you, Kristi, and you, Lucy, and now all these great data supports. I know that this program is going to be remarkable. And I hope that we can support you to get it really moving forward at the pace that I know, Lucy, you really want it to move fast. And I see, I know you do too. It's like you've been penting it up for so long, but if we I am hoping that we'll be able to help support you to get it moving forward in the in the high quality that I know that you're anticipating of yourselves. So.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I think one of the things that's really interesting to all of us as a team is how do we make ourselves the premier model so that we start to recruit just by being inherently excellent and people want to come and we can offer lab experiences for teachers. We've been thinking, well, shoot, if we can do it at Vida, why couldn't we do it at another school for dual language? And how do we really attract people that way? It's a it's a powerful model and it would be it would be a really fun project. Sandra, I see you have your hand up too.
Yes, I I'm very excited about this. I think just knowing the experience of an EL being an EL student myself, knowing the benefits of the dual language program, I think I'm just really excited to see how this flourishes and how it benefits our students. But I would also love to kind of hear more about how you think having a full school as an example, this is, I know this is hypothetical right now, but how RBG could be a benefit in being a full dual language school.
Thanks. Well, one of the things that we've been looking at with the DART team is where where are our Spanish speaking students clustered? And they are clustered sort of around that general area where Anderson and RBG will be. So that includes, and Anne, you might have to help us up, was Ogden and potentially Truman and.
Hazel Dell.
Hazel Dell.
Hazel Dell, Juan Grove, and potentially Truman.
Yeah. So I think I'm curious what Lucy thinks. Having been a dual language principal with half my, it was half and then it became three quarters of my students were in dual language and then the other portion of them were in English. It became a challenge to maintain an identity as a dual language school, which was really important to us, is making sure everybody could see themselves in that model. But from a logistical sense was challenging to provide all of the professional learning we needed to do and we wanted to do it in Spanish. So I think it offers an opportunity to really elevate the program linguistically and pedagogically in Spanish and it's less competition for resources. So that's, I think I approached that from a fairly negative view, but I think flipping it on its end is that it provides a lot of opportunities for a school community to really identify around being a fully bilingual community and embracing that, whether you come as a Spanish speaker or an English speaker.
I agree with all side, Kristi.
Yeah. And then I think just in terms of how we could more easily get a large chunk of our students into the program in one fell swoop under one roof might might provide us some efficiencies in the short term while we're figuring out what to do with the potentially super large numbers that will come to us. So it's some thinking that we would like to do with you. I know Lindsay is starting to look for some research for us on pros and cons about having a full school model versus having strands and strands within the same school building.
I did reach out to actually Washington DC. They have actually both programs. They have a lot of strand programs, but they also have full dual language programs. And I asked her for some research and she basically told me, she told me her experience where she where she is in in DC area. And she did state that her full schools, full dual language schools were they were having more success than the strand programs. And she was just speaking for her, you know, her district. So that was just a food for thought.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll jump in. I have just to follow up, I think, on the question of RBG because that when you asked us what we were thinking about when we saw your presentation, that caught my eye right from the get go. I love everything you said about the learning lab and the opportunities that would provide the community, the sense of community that it would afford the professional development. Just trying to reconcile that with our community school model. And and I'm not saying it in a bad way because I I'm on board with having a full school, a a hundred percent buy in on dual language, but knowing that we have been invested in the community school model. I assume that if we did have a freestanding dual language school, transportation would be provided regardless of boundary. I mean, or that would be a consideration, I assume. So just in terms of as we consider, as we continue to evaluate other programming, I just want to kind of like high level think through, and I'm not saying tonight, but just continue thinking through how this like works with our community school model. I do believe that dual language is absolutely I I think this absolutely supports our equity policy and I do think this is a smart move forward and I love the idea of dedicating one school building to building the program because then I assume that's not enough classrooms to get us to where we need to be twenty thirty. But it definitely gives us a good starting place that then we can use as an anchor to build out. And I I think that that seems like a really strategic model. So I'm only bringing this up because I do know we're we are being thoughtful about all of our specialty programs around the district and I just want to kind of keep evaluating how this works within community schools.
And one of the things we could have put in here, and I didn't think to add it into our slides, is we did revamp a little bit the entrance criteria requirements for how to get into dual language and really highlighted that this is a program primarily for multilingual students and that they are given our first priority so that it doesn't become kind of competition for families for whom this is is more of a benefit, a secondary benefit, not, you know, a really kind of life or death instructional piece. So that'd be something we'd have to really keep in front of us as if we were to go on a big scale like that. So we don't end up in a situation like we have with some of the others where it appears to be that it's more about privilege than about educational opportunity or need.
Absolutely. Is when we look at that map and that there is growth in that specific pocket around RBG is the idea that we would while we also have classrooms at Roosevelt and King and Harney more on the south end, is the idea that that would more draw kids closer to RBG?
At this point, there's there's no idea about what it looked like. We don't want to get ahead of ourselves. It's just when we look at this data, it compels the questions that we're bringing forward tonight for your consideration, knowing that we're going into a strategic planning process as well, knowing that next year we do have to do boundary revision because we would be bringing RBG online the following year. These are questions that you as board director should be thinking about. And so the team wanted to offer some data that kind of presents the the situation, the opportunity that's ahead of us.
So I have a question around that. So if we're looking at let's just say we're looking at RBG being the school. Are we looking at it going online as the school next year, which is when RBG would be opening? And if so, then are we, since we don't necessarily, we don't have, we can't hire a whole bunch of dual language teachers to put in that building, are we looking then at moving teachers? And again, don't have to have the answers tonight, but these are the things that are going through my head now.
I just want to be really clear because as we're starting this process, those are big questions, but that would you would definitely, we would need to get
Right.
figure out where we're at, all those things. So this is more, we have this eighteen month window before RBG is supposed to open. What what kinds of things should we be looking at? It's similar to like the balanced calendar discussion, right? It's not that we're saying that we're moving to a balanced calendar next year.
Emails, no emails about the fact that we're putting all the dual language kids at
It's just more about.
We're just discussing what to do. Yes.
Trying to do our due diligence and looking at all the opportunities that are out there. What's the need in the community? And then how do we how do we set you up to give us direction on a plan moving forward? So Sandra? Director, Zavala, or Tegan?
Um, this is kind of a two part question. But so I know that in dual, we talk a lot more about like our primary students, right? But I would like to know more data around our secondary and high school students. Kind of how they're doing and kind of if our if our students are dwindling out of the program and how do we keep them in the program? And also just, I guess, what is the vision for our secondary and and high school? I know that I know where each end, right? But I guess just kind of is there more support needed in those areas? I guess I just I would like, because I I do know that we focus a lot of our with dual language with our elementary age. But I guess I would like to also acknowledge that in our secondary and high school is also I think important for us to talk about too.
Absolutely. Those are great questions and ones that the team has been talking with and with the consultant. Those are questions that we raised as well that the programming at the elementary, I think we all have a vision of what that looks like because of the models that we created. Clearly opportunities to to expand those. But it gets a little murky when we start talking about what the secondary model looks like. And it would be hard pressed for us all to have a similar ability to articulate that vision. And so there's definitely an opportunity there. And as you saw that expansion, the graphs are awesome in terms of showing us that not only are we expanding horizontally with classrooms at the K level, but we also need to think vertically as as students are moving through our system, what are their experiences like? So you know, I think that the next step for this is to again, come back, allow you to kind of process what you heard tonight and then meet individually or a couple at a time to really ask some questions and allow our team to bring some research back to you. And so when you have questions come in your head, you know, we'll create an opportunity for us to collect those and then come back to you. So I want to keep us kind of moving to, but I want to honor the the presenters if there's any other final thoughts and questions from board directors too. If there's any other final thoughts and questions from board directors too.
I have one last question. I was also, I guess this kind of just popped in my head. And I know, like I said, doesn't, like I think Dr. Snow is saying, it doesn't have to be answered now, but how the dual language in EL would also encompass our, like, our first come, our, what's it called, the first comers?
Newcomers.
Newcomers. I guess how that would integrate, or I don't know if it does integrate or not. But I guess I would just love to kind of know more about that as well.
Excellent.
Just adding on to that, I think also, how with this new integration, how we're supporting our students that aren't native Spanish speakers, but different languages and how that will evolve?
Yeah, we don't sleep so much anymore. We've got lots of big ideas to work on. So that's what we're doing.
Thank you.
Thanks for giving us the time to get back to you guys. Appreciate it.
And these slides will be included again in the weekly update and with an opportunity for you to add comments and questions. That format seems to be working well because it allows us to kind of, okay, understand where your energy is and allow us to prepare to give you the information you need. Big decisions. And once too, that as you're thinking about the strategic planning process, which is a presentation later tonight, how do you capture voice around some of these ideas that you know that we need to address? You know, when you look at that data, it's compelling data. We need to do something, have a plan in place. And so how do we engage our broader community in that discussion to understand their thoughts about it as well? So kind of put that filter on. Team, dual language team, thank you for being on here tonight and presenting. Appreciate you. Director Barrows, do you want me to keep us moving? Okay. Re-share our screen, introduce Deanna. Get us to the right slides here too, sorry. So Deanna's here tonight. I'm going to turn it over to her and talk a little about competency based diploma and an action item that, and a future board meeting that will need you to consider. So Principal Hogan, it's you.
Thank you so much. I'm very excited to be here to share with you some work that we're very passionate about and that is working with you who have disengaged from their educational experience at some point and re-engaging them in a meaningful way so that they can graduate and become productive members of our community. So I'm here to talk about Open Doors Youth Re-Engagement. And our objective today, if we can go to the next slide, is to provide you with, hold on, I have to get the picture together. Okay. Provide you with information about Open Doors Competency Learning Model in hopes of gaining approval to apply for the State Board of Education for credit-based graduation requirement waiver for Open Doors this spring in hopes of implementing fully for the 22, 23 school year. So I'm not going to belabor a whole bunch around Open Doors. So I have a lot of links and information within these slides, knowing that you have access to those at any time. But if we go to the next slide, just talking a little bit about the history of Open Doors within Washington State. This was legislated in 2014. And the intent was to re-engage those students that are not traditionally successful in a comprehensive high school setting. And I, I think it's fairly true that my grandmother could probably walk into a high school and it would look somewhat similar to what high school looked like for her. It definitely would look somewhat similar to what my experience was. I'm not going to tell you how many years ago. And so we know that not every student is successful there and they disengage from their learning. And but we want to have that opportunity to have flexible pathways for those students and have, have community partnerships to support them like we do with our FCRCs and keep them engaged in their education and then eventually result in diploma. What we found when we began in 2015 with one teacher and a handful of kids with our own Open Doors program here in Vancouver Public School District is that what we were doing wasn't working any better. We mostly were using online learning. It was still disengaging for students and, and we were struggling to see the successes that we wanted. So we added to our team and we did a lot of research. We did site visits. We participated in different conferences and really started looking at what a competency based model looks like for students. These are students who are at the minimum age of 16. They are coming to us significantly credit efficient. There are two requirements for them to stay enrolled in the program. One, they have to meet an indicator of academic progress every three months, which is equivalent to earning a point two five credit. So that's a pretty small bar or low bar as far as maintaining their participation in the program. But the intent is to keep them connected with the public school system until we can figure out how we get them to that graduation. And then another minimum requirement is the students have to have two hours face to face with an advising teacher in order to stay enrolled. We ask our students to come in weekly as we go through this competency process with them. So we have three years of data here as far as how many students have graduated. And of course, we don't technically graduate students in our Open Doors program. We send them back to their resident school where they graduate, but they meet the requirements through Open Doors. So in 2019, which is when we started investigating a competency based model, of the students we had enrolled, we had 15 graduates, six of them were on time graduates. But we saw a huge increase in that as we actually started to use the philosophy of a competency based diploma and really implement that with more of our students. We kind of were just playing with the idea of planning. And then we started identifying students we thought would be successful in this type of program. So that in 2020, we had 66 total graduates, 18 of them being on time graduates. And in 2021, we didn't see a total increase in our graduates, but we did see more students graduating on time through this type of learning. So we were really excited to see that, that growth. I have linked a Columbia article from 2017, if you're ever interested about the Open Doors program, at least at that time, which is before we went into the competency model. But it does have a, some really, a really good insight into the types of students who were attracted or were going into Open Doors. Okay, next slide. Thank you. So why competency? Basically, within a traditional system, it's very a fixed mindset. It's time bound. We expect students have to graduate within four years. They take so many classes, they earn so many credits, and they need to do it on the pace of the school. And not every student learns well in that type of environment and not all students learn at the same pace. And it really is based more on extrinsic motivation. There's a lot of variability, even though our district is working to align teacher practice and grading to be more standard based. There's still is a lot of variety in how teachers grade or determine proficiency. And we have schools designed so it's efficient way to deliver curriculum in certain subject areas. When we start talking about competency, it's very asset focused, individualized. It's rigorous and it's equitable. Students advance based on their demonstration and mastery. The competencies include explicit measurable transferable learning objectives. We'll get a look at those in just a minute. Assessment is meaningful and something that students can act upon immediately. Students receive timely and differentiated support and students develop and apply a broad set of skills and dispositions that are transferable to the world after high school. We'll talk about the competencies. Next slide please. So a lot of our work has been based in competency work from the Aurora Institute. And this is their definition of competency. First of all, it's meant to empower students to make decisions about their learning experiences. So it's about what do I need to learn about so that I can demonstrate these competencies? So there's a lot more intrinsic motivation aligned with that. Assessment is actionable because students are constantly in this inquiry process as they continue to learn and develop more skills and then demonstrate proficiency or mastery. Students receive timely differentiated support in that process. See, and as they demonstrate evidence of mastery. And then they are learning actively as they are part of the creator. They are the creators of their learning experience in conjunction with the advising teachers, which allows for equity for all students. And it's very rigorous as we look at the mastery requirements and the rubrics that we use to, to score those. Next slide please. So this here are the, is a graphic of the competencies that we are utilizing, again informed by competency works. Each of those indicators such as critical thinking, creative thinking, collaborative thinking. If you click on those, you'll actually go to the rubrics that we have been working on for those particular competencies. So they're grouped into learning skills, literacy skills, life skills. And then part of our project or inquiry process includes project skills. And then every inquiry process results in a published project, which I'll show you a couple of those in just a moment. Next slide please. All right. So this is, like I said, if you click on the links within the previous slide, it'll lead you to the actual rubrics. So students are, receive feedback on their inquiry process on their project and they are told whether it's approaching net or exceeds. Net will get them where they need to go, but we encourage them to go to exceeds. And they, they know that what these expectations are as they go through this process and then receive that feedback. This can be done directly from the teacher, but they also do this through workshop model with other students as they receive feedback through that process. And the next slide will show us what that process looks like. It's kind of like action research. We could take a look at that one. So students start with a question. What do I want to know? Why, why does that matter? Why is this going to be a focus of the project? And then they go through a planning process and this is where they get a lot of feedback from the, their peers within, oh, thank you, from their peers, identifying resources that might help. How will they share their findings? So again, everything is, has a result in some published project or product. And then they go through the research process, gathering their sources and info, which includes they're having to think critically, this critical thinking and creative thinking, they're two of the competencies we're working on, about the resources that they're using. Are they valid? Are they reliable? Are they relevant? And as they do the research process, again, all the way through this, they're receiving feedback from peers and from advising teachers. They create their solution to answer their initial question, which could result in designing or building. And it definitely includes collaboration and communication. And again, they're still receiving feedback and critique. So then they need to continue improving what they've been doing. It's a iterative process until they finally publish their final product. And on the next slide, I have some links to what those final products look like. So if you were to click on Welcome It to Your Future, that is the actual Open Doors webpage, Google, Google page, Google site. And it includes, it includes informational videos about competency and what that is. We also offer within Open Doors a GED option, so it includes information about that. But also under projects, the blog and the inquiry podcast, you will see examples of the published products. And for this particular slide, one of those is, one of our students created a Google site regarding deaf culture. And so really went in deep about deaf culture and what that was. And so this was one of her final projects. And it's not that they're one project in depth. There are multiple things going on as they have to demonstrate mastery in all of the competencies that were shown on the previous slide. And then there's also products where there's a presentation piece. So those are also in there, but that's an example of the third image on this particular side. Part of that is students need to talk about what their future plans are and how they're going to utilize this information to reach those future plans. So at the very end, when they've met all the competency, they're doing this future me presentation. And so that is their actual final product. All right, next slide please. We have been engaging in the philosophy of competency based instruction and learning, but we've been trying to fit it into a traditional transcript model. And it's just not that, and it doesn't really demonstrate what students are doing or learning. So what we've been doing is aligning the competencies with standards that are related to content area courses and then figuring out how that looks on a traditional transcript so that the students can then go back to their traditional high school and can earn a diploma. So there's been a lot of this alignment work that we've been doing. One, to ensure that the competencies are aligned with standards and content. But two, so that we can transcribe it in this very rigid transcript model that has been part of education for a very long time. So one of the things that we would need to consider as we consider moving towards a competency based model for Open Doors specifically, is what that transcript might look like. So this is an example from Mastery Transcript Consortium, where you can get very quick visual on where students are in the different content areas. You can actually upload what the different projects and products are that students have used to meet that. And then where the competencies and the content areas align. It can be very individualized. It can also be specialized for schools. So that would be one of the things that we would have to look into. Another thing that we have to look into is if we were to apply for and receive this waiver from the traditional content area diploma to a competency based one, is that we would actually need to be able to graduate our students because the waiver would be for Open Doors, not for the district. It would just be for our one school. And so with that, it would look very different, wouldn't translate back to the traditional high school. So that would, those are two things that we would need to investigate further as we move through the application process. But this is an opportunity. So through this, the vision of the State Board of Education by offering this particular waiver is to allow schools to move to a standards and performance based system more easily through this credit based high school graduation requirements waiver. Currently, there are 15 other high schools in Washington State who have applied for and have received the waiver. There is a hot link I can add here that leads you to that webpage and that list of schools. To do this though, before I can even start on the application, I need to have the approval of our school board to apply for this waiver that would allow us to offer officially a competency based model and diploma to our Open Doors students. So I wanted to have the opportunity to provide some information about what we're doing and give you resources so that you could go searching through these webpages as well and see some of the work we've already been doing, our students have been doing. And also given up any to ask any questions that you have. I'm happy to provide as much detailed information as, as you want. That was a lot in a short period of time.
Jeff, can you just clarify, will maybe, is this an action item that we need to provide formal approval at a board meeting before she can, okay?
Yeah, that's, we tentatively are thinking about the March meeting and so wanted to get Principal Hogan in front of you today and then research materials for you so that you could explore those and so everyone feels comfortable having it as a consideration.
And it gives me an opportunity to hear your question, so I know there's additional resources I need to provide before that decision is made, because this is a very different way of thinking about high school and probably not the way any of us in this Zoom room have experienced it.
Just to clarify one other thing, so while in Open Doors, the students will remain DPS students?
Yes, they are DPS students.
Okay, because before, didn't they transfer out and then transferred back in? Okay.
No, I, I could get into the weeds on this if you want.
Not necessarily.
Okay. Yes, the ones that we have here at Heights Campus are DPS students.
Okay.
Director Decker, you have a question?
Yes, so one of the, and you don't have to give me this information now, but one of the things I would be interested in is, because I don't, my vision for the school district isn't just what, how, how many kids do we graduate out? It's how many citizens do we produce for the community? And so one of the things I'd be interested to know about is what's the data on once they leave with the competency? Now, I am what's the data on once they leave with the competency? Now, I am, I love the information that you gave us. It's very exciting. In some ways, I feel like if we could figure out how to do that model in our high schools, we lose a lot less students and it would make more sense to all of our students about why they were doing what they were doing. That's way down the line, but I do want to make sure that or at least get some information on what happens to these students post-graduation. Like where did they go? What did they do? How successful are they in their next step? So that would be something that I'd be interested in.
I appreciate that. And I can actually get you data on that. One of the requirements of Open Doors is that we do track what they're doing at least the next year. So and there's a lot more language under the Open Doors plaque around transition planning. So we've been making partnerships with Clark and their transition program into Clark College. Because our, our vision is very much aligned to what you were just saying. We want to make sure that our students aren't just receiving a piece of paper and they're done. That's, that's not what this is about, right? And one of the things that I love about Open Doors is it allows us the flexibility to be creative and pivot quickly in order to actually meet students where they are. And it's harder to move a comprehensive high school in a short period of time than it is for me to be able to do something like this for students. I totally agree with you. It'd be great to see this in a way that all students benefit. They didn't have to wait until they were disengaged and 16 years old before they could access this educational opportunity. I'm right with you there.
Other questions?
I would, and I'll dig through the slides you presented. I think because I did go to school in a traditional classroom setting, I'm still getting my brain around how these projects kind of translate into the equivalent of credits to ensure that I really appreciate all that you shared in terms of competency based measurement, because I do think in, we're trying to prepare individuals towards a successful life. But kind of are there, are there, I don't want to use the word metrics, but in terms of if they're credit deficient and they have let's say they have 15 credits, like is the workload will vary based on how many credits they enter into with Open Doors? Okay, so there it's, it's what they need to still complete and then that will be kind of calibrated.
Yeah, one thing that's missing that I should have added, and I work with my team on this, but I didn't think about it until your question right here is what, what their plan, how the planning document works based on what they're coming in with and then what do we need to fill in to actually demonstrate competency so that it's equivalent to what a traditional four-year diploma looks like. And there's the students, one of the things I love about this is the students are very involved in that planning process. And this year we've added parents into that process as well, or if they have parents, many of our kids are unaccompanied by parents or parenting themselves, honestly. But we share and communicate with whoever their significant team is, you know, who's their support folks. So there is a very detailed scaffold of process that we go through with the students first to determine what are they going to be working on and then to do go through that inquiry process. And I think you'll see that I we've shared obviously some of the student products with you. So I think you'll see the results of that in those products. But honestly, I, I think the best way to really see what it looks like is to be here and see it because it's pretty, it's pretty amazing and the student involvement and engagement. Oh my gosh. I forgot the video. Can I show you the three minute video?
Why don't we, Deanna, why don't we put that in the link? Yeah, the link, just because the format isn't necessarily for our study session for a video?
It was in, I wanted the slide, but I'll also do it as well. It was, it's student work.
Yeah.
About their experience within the competency model.
And the other piece of this is like the, the item for approval in March is so that we can submit an application. So just so you know as well, the State Board reviews to make sure that all the components of the program, all the credits that we award meet the standard. And State Board takes that very seriously. So there's multiple layers of accountability in this. But we did want to get it ahead of you so that you understand what we would be applying for. And if you're comfortable with endorsing that.
So, go ahead, Tom.
I just wanted to say, Deanna, that being able to visit school and having had that opportunity to have a conversation with you and see it. I think this kind of gave me a more in-depth feel as well. So I definitely encourage other directors to go visit. Because I think it definitely, because I feel like I didn't really understand what Open Doors was until I was there and being able to see it and understand it. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
And Deanna, I want to say, I don't know how many people were involved in cross referencing all the standards and making sure that it all aligned with the typical transcript. That is a ton of work, just just aligning a lesson plan with standards can take so much time to actually align your entire program with state standards and try and make it mesh with the stereotypical transcript. Thank you to you and whoever else was involved in all of that. That's pretty impressive. Thank you.
Yeah, for very impressive teaching this program.
So I think I do need to visit per Director Small's recommendation, but just so I am clear on this. Students from other campuses that are participate in Open Doors, they would then transfer to the Heights Campus?
Right.
Or is it just, okay?
I'm sorry, currently the students that they are joining Open Doors, they're enrolling within the Open Doors entity. Currently, once they meet graduation requirements, we then transfer them out of Open Doors back to the resident school in order to graduate. To actually do this model, we would be offering a competency based diploma. So we would actually need to graduate our students through Open Doors rather than transferring them back.
Right, but this wouldn't just be for Heights students. It would be for students all across DPS that could participate in this.
Heights doesn't have its own neighborhood or anything. We don't have our own student body. It's everybody. Yes.
Right, I just want, like, yes, yes.
So does that add another great graduation ceremony to our list of to-dos? That would be awesome.
We do do one every year, yeah.
Okay, well, at this point, any other, I want to make sure everybody has an opportunity.
Well, I'm sure I'm going to have more specific questions. Can we just add them into like weekly update or like a Google?
Have that follow up with the study session presentations today. The link to slides and then an opportunity to annotate or ask questions so that we can because we, we want to make sure that you have all those questions answered before it's an agenda item. So. Okay. Thank you, Principal Hogan, Deanna, for your time. So we are on to our second to the last topic this evening and I'm going to reshare my screen and invite Tom to talk. We visited this last really in depth back in the fall. And it's time for us to kind of check in with you again and get your perspective as we think about strategic planning. And you certainly have had items that come up as strategic planning worthy kinds of items tonight and in previous meetings. So Tom's going to walk us through a little bit process and get some feedback from you as well.
Okay, well, good, good evening, everyone. We're going to take a kind of a quick walk through the timeline for strategic planning, which we first shared with the board last August. Actually, I'm not sure that was the first sharing of it. It's probably happened a few times, but we have new members. So we'll walk through that quickly, not spend a whole lot of time on it. But we do need to, we are at the point where this spring, we need to identify a facilitator who will help lead the process and, and then also form a core team that will guide the, guide the process. Make sure that we're effective in implementing that, all the outreach and stakeholder engagement that we need to and, and just manage the timeline, keep, keep things on track. So and then we also want to review and discuss some of the ideas that were brainstormed at the February meeting of the Superintendent's Transition Team. When I presented a little bit of strategic planning history and went over the timeline with that group. And Tracy and Kyle were in attendance there. So you'll be familiar with the list of ideas. So let's go ahead and jump into it. We'll roll through this pretty quickly. As I said, after spring break, we'll want to be well into identifying a facilitator and consultant to manage the process. As you, I think most of you recall, when we talked in August last year, we talked about two different, two or three different ways the board could manage a strategic planning refresh process. One was to hire an outside firm to do the whole thing, bring in their sort of boilerplate approach. One was to do a, an internal internally led process that's managed by staff. And, and then one would be sort of a hybrid of those two. And I think we landed through the board preferred the hybrid approach. Having a facilitator has some objectivity and is a step removed from the, the district lends credibility. And we're also talking with a firm called Hanover Research. Looking at a potential contract for services with Hanover and over supports districts throughout the United States in their strategic planning work and has access to an enormous database of best practices and can really help us in informing the work as we move, move through and develop a plan. And they also have the capability to as we collect data and feedback through our public engagement activities. Hanover has the tools to organize and synthesize that data and present it in a way that's understandable for the community and the board to digest. So we want to be working on that sort of groundwork this, this spring. And would welcome suggestions from the board on facilitators that you may know of in your personal professional circles. Jeff, Dr. Stone, I have a couple of two or three ideas, but we'll want to be issuing a request or proposal from those folks and then bringing those to you for consideration in spring. We'll also be building capacity with the district leadership team, signing some reading materials and study questions and asking them to prepare for our August workshop. And then very publicly, we'll be informing the community about the process this spring and inviting broad participation. In August, when we come back, as I mentioned, the DLT, a strategic planning workshop will be held with the DLT, including our central administrators and principals, associates, and that will be the first group that we work with to identify those strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. Next slide please. There are touch points for the board all the way through the timeline. And so I'll, I'll, I'll mention those as we go along. In September, we'll really begin to engage our external stakeholders and internal stakeholders, beginning with students in a, either a workshop format or it might be a combination of workshop and focus groups. To again, identify those strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. We will in October bring the results of the DLT workshop and the student workshop or focus groups to the board and summary and report those out. Next slide please. And in October, we also envision a broader community stakeholder, either workshop or symposium and or a combination of focus groups to again, identify those SWOTs. The community symposium or focus groups would encompass all internal and external stakeholders. So when I say community, I'm using that in the broadest sense. So students, staff, both classified and certificated. Representatives from the business community, government agencies, our community partners, patrons at large, volunteers, you name it, we would have representation in those, those groups. In November, we would come back to the board with a summary of that input. And then somewhere in the, this probably December timeframe, we would form goal area teams that would focus on the broad themes that emerge from all of the input that we've received. And those would be typically, those themes would be elevated through the, the process. And then we would form a goal area team around each one of those themes to begin to write goals and objectives and, and identify measures of success associated with those. So that work would happen in January, February timeframe, we present draft goals, objectives, the metrics to the, the board. That at that same time, Superintendent Cabinet would develop a goal initiation schedule. So over that, let's say if it's a five-year plan, we would, we would sequence the work best we can at that time and align our budget resources. So that we have an implementation schedule. And then in March, we would post a draft plan on the district's website and invite broad stakeholder participation and submitting comments back on the draft. In April, the goal area teams would reconvene to consider any final feedback from the community and refine the plan. We would hold a board work session in May to review that final draft plan. And then we're aiming for June 2023, a board meeting to adopt the new strategic plan and celebrate. Because this is going to be worthy of a big celebration. So want to share with you some ideas that came out of the Superintendent's Transition Team meeting when we shared the the process and timeline. Here were some of their suggestions and I'll just go through them very quickly. There was a suggestion, suggestion to rebrand strategic planning to something more inviting or exciting or accessible. One district called it, called their, their planning process Every Student Future Ready. As an example, it's just a little bit more friendly than strategic planning. So we would work on something like that. Using the new outreach tools and opportunities that weren't previously available to us and in our other cycles of strategic planning. So certainly we would do that. Going out to the community instead of asking people to come in. So absolutely there would be, some of the outreach would be based out in the community, especially with groups that we want to make sure that we are intentional about including to have the broadest participation, including those voices that have been marginalized or not present in traditional settings. And providing translation or interpretation in native language. We've done that in the past with our design symposia. We certainly do it in this case. Getting insights from students who have very, who are in various circumstances and various stages of their K-12 journey. This was a, a pretty insightful recommendation, rather than convening a group of high school seniors, for example, to reflect on their past, you know, history with the district. The suggestion was to identify students who are experiencing different stages within their K-12 journey. So for example, sixth grade transition. So for example, sixth grade transition, ninth, ninth grade transition. Or I'm, I'm trying to decide between attending a neighborhood school and a magnet program. Students in different circumstances so that we get different perspectives. Talking with local employers about what they need from our graduates. And how we can create or enhance the pathways to careers. Asking for feedback from recent graduates, so that's something that we have done in past cycles. Next slide, please. There was a suggestion generally to focus on high quality rather than quantity. And I, I think that pertained not only to the engagement processes, but also the plan itself. Rather than going really wide and shallow. That we go a little bit deeper and more, and more strategic and more focused. Do nothing else for a period of time, make strategic planning important. So really try to focus the work of the system on this for, for a little bit and make sure that we do it well. Involve school-based staff and engaging their own school communities. So recommending people from their school communities to become and encouraging them to be part of the process. Focusing on future readiness, really try to look on what may be out on the horizon. How to prepare the system for what's coming. Provide regular and ongoing updates to show our progress. And then finally, ensure the community recognizes some tangible benefits that will come from a multi-year plan. Some examples of that have been facilities, technology, partnerships, innovative programs. You know, those have been things that we worked on in the past. But what, what can we, what can the community expect from this planning process? So there was a lot, but I would invite your feedback now. And again, especially on, we are again needing to identify consultant facilitator. And that doesn't have to happen at tonight's meeting. But if you have suggestions and could email those to Dr. Snell or B, or both of us. That would be real helpful and we can reach out to those people. And then just your thoughts in general about the process and the timeline.
I really liked the suggestion that came from the Superintendent Transition Meeting. About kind of thinking about how we're either branding it or how we're advertising it to the community. Because if we're really wanting to elicit a lot of feedback from the community. I think strategic planning is such a, an educational term. That I don't think the general community would even understand like what it is. And so if it's specifically, you know, like even just calling it like listening sessions. Or, you know, future planning, or I don't know, just something that really helps kind of the general public understand the type of feedback we're wanting and kind of really what the purpose of the session or whatever it is that we're inviting them to, like, you know, really what the purpose of it is going to be. So I thought that was a great idea. I really like it.
I agree.
Just to clarify, the consultant or the facilitator that we hire, that will be an RFP process?
Yeah, I, maybe Dr. Snell can comment on that piece.
Yeah, it depends on the scope that we want. I think what we heard from you in August was not like a full board, like turn this over. But at the same time, wanting to have some sort of a third point community kind of liaison that, you know, we want to all be a part of the process as staff too, right? So, and it does, as Tom mentioned, bring some neutrality to the facilitation process. So the scope of that work could require like an RFP process. Regardless if it's that, the scope or not, we would want the board directors to potentially interview or to talk with candidates who might be interested in helping us out. Just to know if they're meeting the style or approach that you're hoping for as, as going through this process. The backend part of it, Hanover Research, as Tom said, would be more of a consolidating feedback that we get. Matching that to best practice. So for example, with dual language, the conversation we had earlier this evening. You know, what, what other districts have made this leap? What does that look like? How do we network? What have been their next steps? So that, that group, we can kind of empower to help us, even though we've got a great team as well. But it's nice to be able to look out across the country when we're doing these kinds of things. So.
Well, the reason I asked about the RFP, I, I know it can be a very cumbersome process and very formulaic and so forth. But I like the idea, well, I mean, I appreciate you turning to us and asking if we have any contacts we would recommend. But I do also like the idea of RFPs where they're open to the public. Because there's oftentimes someone we might, that might not occur to us or might not necessarily be in our own contacts. And wanting to make sure that it is an open opportunity. I'm kind of comparing this to, we hire, we had an RFP to hire a consultant to help us through the super, when we chose a firm. So a consultant to choose the consultant. And just then interviewing the different firms and so forth. And, and it was, it was very valuable to just kind of hear what they thought they wanted to bring to the table. So I think that whether it's an RFP process or not, I'd love it to be open where people would have the option to apply. Not just be invited to interview. And then also have, once there's a narrowed down group, have the, maybe the board be able to have those conversations.
I think that's important too. This is, you know, a process with this board that's relatively new with new members coming on. And a strategic planning process that we haven't all been through together, right? And the community hasn't had for a while. So we want you all to feel really comfortable with who's facilitating. Because even though it's maybe a third party, they're still the face of the district for these experiences that our community is going to have, right? So we want you to feel comfortable with them. Does the timeline sound reasonable for, for you all? Is there, I mean, it's aggressive, but we also don't want to spend forever, you know, talking about what we would like to do. We would like to kind of, as Tom said, narrow that focus and get some depth to the work.
How, how much flexibility is there in the timeline? I mean, sometimes I don't want to be a slave to a timeline. It's good to have, you know, some benchmarks. But obviously, starting the 2023 school year with a strategic plan would be the goal, right? And so getting it done in June. But I mean, is there give or take? Just sometimes like, can we, can we be flexible to the feedback we're receiving? Or diving back in and saying, oh, we didn't get great, you know, we need to engage further with local businesses, for instance.
I think that actually would be an indicator of a good plan to have some of that approach. If, if it goes all according to what we scripted here and Tom shared, then it's more like going through the motions, I would say. So the anchor points will be, as Tom described, the, the board meetings, right? That are already publicized. So we would want to have a regular cadence. Now, that doesn't mean that each time we bring exactly what we had intended, might need to flex, right? Because of what you just described, Kyle. So I, I think anchor points around board meeting, anchor points around trying to have something in place for the 23, 24 school year.
For my vantage point, at the last few months of the timeline seemed a little aggressive, particularly of synthesizing all the information. Maybe it works out, but maybe we'd need to wait until July to, and I'm just thinking through the process of our equity policy and how we've, we went through that. And we had so many rounds of conversation and drafts and just wanting to make sure that we might need an extra month or two.
I, I think that the hardest part of this process is going to be to truly have an effective plan. It's actually going to be about narrowing the focus. And previous strategic plans for the district were about opening up possibilities, which is really important at the time. But when you look at whatever topic that we've looked at over the last six months. To really do those things well means that you have to focus on that. And you have to concentrate time and energy and resources to that. So this is a different kind of cycle. And I think anchoring it in the, the student equity policy and the outcomes that we want for each student. It's going to be kind of different, right? And as board directors, you know, you have the difficult challenge of taking all this feedback and all these great ideas. And, and then trying to help direct us as staff to say, yes, but we want your energy on these three things moving forward. Because we think those are foundational to do all the other things that we want to do. So, you know, we, we want to keep kind of coming back to this before we, you know, really get into it later in spring. So that you can keep thinking about that and like, what's going to help you with that, right? And as you're interviewing people, who do you need to help? Kind of go through all the feedback points to help you find common themes. And so it's, it's going to be an interesting journey, I think. Okay, so we'll cycle back in, in our one-on-one, two-on-one conversations to get more feedback about this. But like I said, or Tom mentioned, please reach out to him or I with any ideas or questions. And the Superintendent Transition Team is, is hopefully going to, we talked at the last meeting. That hopefully some of you will be members of the guiding coalition. Because you've invested a year of kind of going through the process and great comments to our student representatives tonight. Because they have had this year experience, right? So they will be awesome leaders as we move into the next phase of this transition. So Tom, thank you so much for sharing this evening. And with that, I'll take us to the last topic of the evening. Okay. So I got my, my usual slides. I, I am excited to show, you know, the last three times I've showed, we're on the downward curve of this, the spike. So that's, that's good news. And this will be updated again tomorrow, Thursday. So hopefully we'll continue to see that trend. Certainly, we're seeing the case rates in our schools go down. The notifications, you know, were, were really long emails and now they're, they're starting to shorten up. So all, all signs are pointing to returning to a, a more normal baseline for the pandemic, I guess, down here at the bottom. Our student attendance data continues to kind of be in the upper 80%. We, we flirted with 90% a couple, couple days. And then this last day was Friday before, three-day weekend. So typically, we do see a little drop off there. And our staff attendance from certificated and classified. And again, these are direct service staff members. So it's not all of our classified staff is reflected here. But those relate rates peaked in January. And then since just kind of stabilized around here. So we're continuing to track that data and make sure that we are prepared. If we need to go through any more contingency plans. But certainly, it's a different situation than it was at the start of 2022. So the big news, obviously, last week, we talked in our workshop that there was an anticipated announcement from the governor. And he did have a press conference on Thursday. We notified staff and community about the press conference. Although I'm sure anybody that, that is kind of monitoring this was aware that there, there are some potential changes. And he announced that some of the mandates would be removed. And in particular, the indoor mask requirement would be removed on March 21st. And once that is lifted, masks will be encouraged but not required. And so it'd be up to the individual. And there are some, still some federal requirements related to public transportation, which includes our buses. And so those at this point are still going to be mandatory on buses. Although CDC may revisit that, he referenced that in the press conference. Right now, it's still the same thing. We're still operating as we did last week prior to this announcement. And really appreciate staff and students' cooperation with that. The governor did talk about an intersection of when they believe the cases and the hospitalizations intersect on the calendar. And that's how March 21st was arrived at. And so there isn't just a random March 21st. It's definitely trying to create capacity in our healthcare system is what he articulated. And, you know, so the, he also said that, you know, this is the science. We have some of the best experts in our state, you know, at the University of Washington in particular, that have led you know, the country's effort around this. And then also our collective experience informed his decision. So it was a, obviously a big deal. I mean, I feel like there's been about five transitions throughout this pandemic over the last two years now. And we're just moving to a different phase. And so with each phase, there are people that feel good about that phase and people that are uncomfortable about that new phase. And so trying to manage all those needs that are out there and make sure that we have students and staff and families that feel safe and comfortable. There's a lot of logistics to the announcement that we have to work through. And the nice thing is that the governor and the state superintendent said that the Department of Health and LNI are working on those to give districts direction, that this wouldn't be, every district has to figure it out. That there would be clear direction from, from those entities and that we would need to follow that direction. So as of now, there hasn't been any new release of information from, since the press conference. But we'll be monitoring that. And we have talked with local Clark County Public Health about this announcement. And they have shared that they have no, no intention of being more restrictive. You know, the governor said that local could, could do what they needed to do. What we did talk about is if there are outbreaks at certain locations, that there could be plans put in place. That, that goes back to pre-pandemic when we had measles outbreaks and things like that. Clark County Public Health would come in and advise us and make requirements to keep the school open or to shut it down or whatever it was. So that, that, I say that and try to, try to provide context that that's, that's kind of like normal. It sounds maybe different, but it's, it's what we used to do prior to the pandemic with public health. So that is all I had on the pandemic. Lots more to come in the upcoming meetings that we have. So yeah, happy to answer any questions. Looks like Director Sproul.
Was there any update to contact tracing?
They just said that they know it would be impacted as a result of this announcement. And they will be working to update the, we've had, you know, like a dozen different updates to the flow charts around contact tracing over the last two years. So I would anticipate another update to that. Obviously, I mean, one of the, I shouldn't say obviously. If you're, if you've been doing contact tracing or involved in that, then a question is, did everyone have their mask on? Is one of the questions. And so obviously, you're not going to necessarily have your mask on. And so that does impact the process. So there has to be some adjustments to that. And as soon as we hear some of those, we'll share them with you.
Any shift in ownership of that?
They have said that they would like to see that move back to local public health. I, I anticipate in the short term and in the transition that we would need to, to help support that. Just because of the, the transition process that's been, you know, anytime we've made a transition. It's felt like it's all hands on deck from public health and public schools to make it happen. So I don't think that that would be any different in the short term. I do like the timing from a standpoint of we have two weeks of school and then we have spring break. So hopefully, we can figure out whatever that new system is and kind of get a couple weeks of practice. And then come back from spring break and really end the year on a high note, hopefully of, you know, not having to make another transition would be everyone's hope, I think. Other questions? Okay, maybe you're counting down the last of Jeff Snell's pandemic planning response presentations. That would be tremendous. I know everybody looks forward to those, but I'm looking forward to them to not happen anymore. So I'll turn it back to you, Director Barrows. Thank everyone for your attention. I know there's been a lot of content tonight. Study sessions can be kind of, there's a lot to think about, so.
Yeah, definitely. I want to thank everybody, all of our presenters. And just, you definitely have given us a lot to kind of dig into. And I appreciate you guys taking your time to share with us information. I know it wasn't just presenting tonight, but I can tell that a lot of prep work went into preparing the presentations and the data for us. So thank you. And with that, I believe we are at the end of our study session. And it is 7:20 PM and we are adjourned. Thank you.